It is six o'clock and I hereby call the January 24th, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Here.
Commissioner Reddy?
Present.
Commissioner Butler?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Morse?
Here.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Very good. Please stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item is Commissioner Comment. Anybody? Mr. Morse, anything?
No, I think not.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll go in order.
Yes, we haven't, I don't think we've met since the Martin Luther King Gathering at the Douglas Community Center. It was very well attended. It was a lot of good fellowship and our new Vice President of Diversity at K-State was the Speaker and she did an outstanding job. And I think it's recorded, I'm not sure, but I appreciate the committee putting it together. Thank you.
Very good. We'll keep moving here. Basketball games at eight o'clock. So, the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have been previously reviewed by the Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda or at a different point on the agenda if determined by the City Commission. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Mayor, I will be voting no on G2 and H1. I think it's a sad commentary on this Commission that they are dissolving both the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. It is, those have been vital committees to this Commission in the past and offered good commentary and we have looked to them for support and that's their job is being, quote, "an advisory board." And this Commission has interpreted some of their comments as a challenge and I don't think that's what was going on. But at any rate, that's how I will be voting.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, same with G1 and H2. G2, sorry, G2 and H2.
H1.
H1. I got those numbers mixed up. I'll be voting no. I think it also, you know, if you look at K2 where they, the consent agenda, it has the Douglas Center Historical Sculptors Agreement for Donation of Public Artwork. They also consulted with the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board. So they played a role in some of these things that we are not experts at and when it comes to us, we expect to have the expertise in all of these areas and we're not. And we look to our advisory boards for their feedback when making decisions. We may support their decision and sometimes we may not, but they do the hard work for us. So I will be voting on those two programs being dissolved. A no on both of those. Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, all right. We'll now open, receive public comment on any item on the consent agenda. Members of the public who signed up in advance, which is nobody, would start, go first. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign on the list located on the podium. State your name and your address and/or organization you are representing for the record and for those listening or watching at home. Each speaker will have up to five minutes and can speak only once. Please stop speaking when the timer sounds. We will not answer questions or debate an issue at this point. Anybody want to come up and comment on consent agenda items?
My name is Chad Morrow. I'm from 421 Leavenworth. It's disappointing that the Commission is moving to dissolve the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee because it's free expertise we offer to the Commission as a community and citizens' opportunity to engage with the City Commission. So it is very disappointing. That being said, Commissioner Butler messaged many people in our group concerned about this dissolving and he said that he does support the Bicycle-Pedestrian Plan and we look to make sure that he follows his word that he gave us all that he's going to support it and will be here whenever it comes up for future votes. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else care to weigh in on an item on the consent agenda? All right. If not, then the public comment period for the consent agenda items are closed. Is there a motion from the Commission?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes, but no on G2 and H1.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
No. On G2 and H1 and yes on the others.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two with the exception of item G2, which carried three to two, and item H1, which carries three to two.
Moving on to the general agenda, our first item is consider, continue consideration of a request from the K-State Foundation for an Industrial Revenue Bond Request and Abatement Agreement. And the first order of business is to remove it from the table. Is there a motion?
I move that we remove the general agenda item off the table.
From the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. We'll have Assistant City Manager Jason tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just a quick reminder, back in December, the Commission tabled this item. It was a request to issue up to $30 million in industrial revenue bonds with a 10-year tax abatement at 100%. We were given feedback and direction at that meeting to continue an attempt to negotiate further with the Foundation. We have done so along with the Chamber of Commerce, City Representatives, and Foundation Representatives. We have brought back before you an agreement for economic development incentives that would basically create an accountability for the performance of the Foundation throughout the 10-year period. The agreement acknowledges the first five years, one through five, would be at 100% abatement, but in years six through 10, we would then start factoring in the capital investment, the new jobs, and the wages for those jobs. This type of arrangement and agreement is fairly consistent with what we've done with other past recipients. It's a way to hold some accountability for the company as well as an annual evaluation to determine that percentage we would abate property taxes. So, the blended percentage will give a little bit heavier weight towards the capital investment. If they reach $30 million, their wages are anticipated to be over $50,000 on average and a total of 100 new jobs. All three of those things will be expected in year six and from year six through 10, we'll annually evaluate that. So tonight, in front of you, you do have an agreement that the Foundation and City Administration have negotiated and agreed upon for your consideration that lays out those details. In addition, there's a resolution of intent to issue the $30 million in industrial revenue bonds. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this point in time. I know the Foundation's here as well and may make some additional comments.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason?
Yeah, my only concern about the year six to 10 is the 50% of it is based on the investment, which is already going to be done. So that, that leaves just 50% to be the performance-based part. And in a perfect world, maybe a third, a third, a third, a third of it would be the jobs, a third of it would be the wages, since it's a given that the investments can be done by then. And so that doesn't really leave much of the performance part left. If you just by being there and having it invested, they're too, yeah, they're halfway towards getting all the incentives. So I'm sure they didn't like, didn't want to do that. But is there, is that, is that the same deal we had with Civics Plus?
Actually, for Civics Plus, it's a higher percentage for the capital investment.
Oh.
So, we came with 50, 25, 25. Off Florence, Civics Plus, even Bev Hub, there's a substantial credit for the investment because that long-term revenue stream is secured. If we can secure the $30 million investment in property, you've got a revenue stream through property taxes for the future. The jobs, we always know, can turn over and, you know, you don't necessarily like to point these things out, but even Tall Grass got replaced by Bev Hub. Civics Plus, that building's not full of Civics Plus folks today, but it has that capability to still generate revenue and be a place where new jobs or Civics Plus could come back in there. You just, it's a tough part of the EcoDevo side, the jobs, but if you can create the house for the jobs, that's really what the asset just keeps coming back from an economic development perspective. It's going to add to the tax base, it's going to give that opportunity. And we've repurposed properties in the past. We want to make sure that investment's there. If they decide they're only putting 20 million into this thing, now they got a bigger hurdle to climb with their jobs and their wages. So 30, if they dedicate and follow through with what they've indicated they'll deliver, we're in a better position for resources and revenue in the future.
Okay, very good. All right. So you guys want to, somebody want to, you guys got any other further presentation from the Foundation?
So, Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to rediscuss and reentertain this. I don't have any other comment. I'd answer any questions, but I think the work we've done with staff to address some of the issues of having a blended percentage and some other incentives around the jobs and the wages have been answered adequately. And we feel this is a fair and balanced approach for the City, the community, and for the Foundation. So unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else to offer.
You're off the hook then. All right. We will move on to any public comment. Is anybody in, what?
I have some.
Okay, time out.
Okay.
Commissioners' comment.
The $30 million, the $30 million in IRBs, what is the expectation from the private sector as far as donations to this building?
It'll be 100% privately funded. Industrial revenue bonds are a mechanism that we are a conduit of. They can choose their own private placement of that. They could go actually to the marketplace with industrial revenue bonds. More than likely, they'll privately place their own debt.
So with that, they get the sales tax abatement also, I would assume?
They have not applied through the City for that exemption.
Okay.
They may be able to leverage that other ways, but they did not apply for the City for that exemption.
Okay. So the property tax abatement. And so what is the total property tax abatement for the 10 years? Is it 3.5?
3.6, yes.
3.6 million dollars.
Yep.
And this is a better application than what was presented originally. I like seeing some of the details and some of them placed where they need to be. I do believe it will be good for our community and this, I can be more receptive to this proposal.
And I wanted to mention, and I forgot to in my presentation, they did do a revised cost-benefit analysis. And this cost-benefit analysis takes into account the 100 jobs. It also reflects a property building value that is more in line with what we anticipate. So I very much appreciate the Foundation going through that effort and having that done again. It is more reflective and I think we're a lot more confident in what the cost-benefit analysis shows, which is very positive back to the City and the other taxing jurisdictions with this model. So I wanted to make sure and point that out.
Hang on a second. I was curious, and I went to the County GIS website and I clicked on the Civics Plus building and I see that that and the mall are listed as being owned by the City of Manhattan. Is that because of some IRBs? And so that's, until they're paid off, we're considered a lien holder, guarantor, something?
Yeah, any property, I mean, any property we have outstanding IRBs, we're going to be listed as that owner. There's a lease agreement that you all enter into. Once those projects are done, we'll have to do the same thing here. It's a formality, but it is for tax purposes. If you want further explanation, we got legal counsel on the line.
No, I figured the, with the IRBs part, somehow, because I know we've had, been released from IRBs when they've been paid off with metal art and such.
Exactly. The mall is a little bit different.
Sure.
There aren't IRBs. We own that land. We have that long-term lease with them to occupy that space.
Okay. All right. Anybody else got questions?
Yes, Jason, I have a question. In our IRB policy, there's a statement about competition with other businesses. And how are you justifying moving forward with, when that statement is pretty clear?
Yeah, the Commission has a discretion. And we pointed that out in last December 20th agenda item. The Commission has a discretion to look at that provision and make, you know, basically the action that they desire. I pointed it out. It's part of the policy. We also talked about the policy potentially needing to be looked at in how we do business moving forward. But that is a provision within the existing 03 policy. But right below it is, it gives the Commission that discretion to overlook that, that policy.
What that does is encourage every developer to ask to be an exception. And so how soon are you going to be returning with the revised policy?
I'm hoping to talk to you this Friday about a process that gets us to a new economic development policy. We've engaged with Baker Tilly, our financial advisors. They've done this with other communities. They'll come in, much like a consultant would, and give us guidance. They'll give us a fresh look at what other communities are doing that they're working with. But I do envision the IRB and the abatement policy being part of that discussion. Again, it's been 20 years since we updated the policy. We've had it in front of you for discussion purposes, right before COVID, as I mentioned, 2018. Even then, we were kicking around what others were doing and how aggressive they were being with the tool in certain circumstances. But I'll also reflect back on the conversation on the 20th, recognizing the Foundation is primarily the only developer who could actually develop this property. We have to acknowledge that partner and that relationship and that circumstance in our community. Not every community obviously has a university with a foundation who's also a developer. But when you do look at communities that have that relationship, they have extended many of tools that are available to developers to that property. And we could continue to look at those policies and those practices. As we've traveled around with the Chamber to a lot of university communities, we've seen that tool. And Greg and Greg highlighted some of those last time, too.
I just know that everybody comes to the City and wants money.
Commissioner, just to, if I could add to the distinction I think that's happened since the first consideration is that the focus has been on 100 new jobs and that's what the agreement's on. So it anticipated that this will be at least 250 jobs in this building. And we know that there is a local relocation. So, but the incentives are only going to be on new, 100 new jobs. So I think that's a distinguishing factor in the, in the final analysis.
Sufficiently weighted, huh? My, as I was saying, my concern is that we seem to be the only bank or the only entity with money. And I want the other players to, the county, to step forward, too. I noticed a big article in the paper about how they had such a wonderful bond rating issue and every item in there was a city-funded project. And I've been saying that for several years, that Riley County needs to step up with regard to the econo, Potawatomi County has. And Riley County needs to step up with regard to the economic development needs of this community. They are very, they're benefiting and not putting anything in it, or at least they haven't. So everyone could say, well, I'm going to take care of myself first, or I'm going to take care of my organization first. And I just, I, you know, there's a pattern that every future university building out there will need to be supplemented by the City also in some way. And it just, anyway, our, we have budget issues, too. And, and I, so anyway, all right, thanks. I appreciate the reassurance, Ron.
Just my comment is, I mean, I supported it in the older version, so obviously I'm going to support it in this version. Some Commissioners raised concerns about it not being one of our typical agreements and building and stuff we had done for others. And I think we've met that hurdle now in order to do it. So I'm very anxious to get started with that because there's a lot more developments going to kick off by this being done and stuff that will go on the tax rolls immediately. And we've been told there isn't going to be asks for abatements and things like that on that additional property. So I hope we can get strong support for this.
I think the Foundation has their eyes on the county to help with some other agricultural facilities up that way. So, all right, we'll open it up for-
You know something we don't know.
No, 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 they, well, no.
Ag-wise.
Yeah, they try. So I had another thought, but I forgot. So we'll go on to public comment. Does anybody in the public arena tonight want to comment on this item? Jason?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Smith, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Just want to reiterate our support. We were here the last consideration, supported the initiative. We had similar concerns that some of you expressed at that time. And I think the agreement that the staff and the Foundation team worked out resolves those questions. And so we would encourage you all to support this tonight and look forward to seeing the new construction start. It's one project of what we think is going to be over a billion dollars of new investment over the next three years. And so we're very optimistic about how things are going in the future. So happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Anybody else? Looks like he's taking a seat. All right, I will close the public comment on this item. I would just like to add, if they're actually asking for cash, money out of pocket, out of our Economic Development Fund, that's one thing. The nice thing about this is it's opportunity cost. We're not making any money on the land now. We won't make any money on it next year. We won't make any money until we get something built on it. And then eventually we'll get, get our money back and such. And so, so that's why I'm, yeah, it's, since it's opportunity cost, it's all we're missing out on, I can be very supportive of that idea. So, any other comments for Jason or anybody? If not, someone give me a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 012423-C, authorizing the issuance of $30 million in industrial revenue bonds and a property tax abatement for 1960 Kimball LLC and authorize City Administration to finalize and the Mayor and City Clerk to execute an economic development agreement with 1960 Kimball LLC.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Butler and seconded by Commissioner Reddy. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Do you?
She called my name out.
I'm half deaf here.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Looking forward to some groundbreaking out there. All right, second item. Consider amending the Manhattan Development Code. John?
Hmm. Ah, never mind. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to see if there's any support to postpone this agenda item to a later date when the Commission and the community can have a better understanding and briefing on the contents of it. When the original Manhattan Development Code was passed, there were all kinds of meetings and it was important that everyone understood that in the community. And this time, this, you know, and then we were going to tweak in a year. This is more than a tweak and it involves some floodplain and other items that need, that we need to get the community's attention on to actually, I'm sure the, that the City has vetted this with the development community, but the citizens haven't had a chance, except for the last four or five days, if they're paying attention to this. So I think it would be appropriate to postpone it until a date when we can have some real community discussions on the topic.
Well, I don't know how many people are here to weigh in on that item tonight. Is there a couple, one at least?
Maybe one suggestion is we go ahead and talk it so the people who showed up can get their say. And if we want to table it at that point, we could table it at that point.
Yeah, that seemed to work out pretty well with the Foundation request is, let's hear what the deal is, find out how many people are excited about it. And then if we need to rework something, we can always table again. I suppose you've been wanting to come for a while now, probably, haven't you?
Yes, yes, I have.
Yeah. So, let's, let's hear the spiel, find out what the deal is, see what's controversial, what we need to talk about some more. And then if we need to, if we think there's enough public interest that we need to table it for a while, then we can always do that.
And it does take two readings to pass this, anyway. So-
That is correct.
There's going to be a gap in time if it does get approved for another two weeks. So that's something to consider.
Well, John, why don't you go ahead and tell us?
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, John Adam, Assistant Director of Community Development. As Commissioner Morse just alluded to, I promised you when we adopted the MDC that we would be back in a year to smooth out or correct any mistakes or regulatory oddities that we've encountered in the first year of its life as we've been going. So this first year shakedown crew set of amendments fall into several different categories, corrections of several Scrivener's errors, additions of citations and cross-references that we did not have before. We had some regulatory oversights that had not carried over from the previous zoning regulations that we intended to just were overseen. We found a few redundancies that were sometimes conflicting with one another, so we wanted to take those out to make it easier to regulate. We wanted to adjust some development regulations based on the administrative experience of one year of bringing this in there. You know, we were ambitious about street trees. We're a little too ambitious. We're trying to roll that back a little bit, count trees that are on the lot that are near the sidewalk because they're doing the same job. They're shading the sidewalk. So they don't have to be in the public right of way. They don't have to be in the tree line. We want to just roll back that a little bit. We want to restore the floodplain regulations that were mistakenly streamlined out of existence. And we are shifting the review authority for conditional uses to the Planning Board. Currently, it sits with the BZA. Conditional use permits is site plan, site plan development regulation. It is not an adjustment. BZA is specifically tasked with adjusting the regulations to provide relief to individual property owners. There are certain factors the Planning Board considered in making their recommendations. One is the public benefit. They found that the changes make the code more effective and easier to use. Two is compliance with the purposes of the MDC. They found that it does adhere to those. Three, that areas, looking at the areas that will be most affected by the changes, one thing we are changing is the minimum lot size in the RL. We're taking it back to what it used to be, 6,500 square feet. We had changed, we had created a lot of non-conforming lots in the RL District by doing that because the minimum right now is 10,000 square feet. And so there's several lots that are well below 10,000 square feet. They should not be penalized for this. Four, the necessity of the amendment because of changing conditions- for this. Um, four, um, the necessity of the amendment because of changing conditions, um, there are no real changing conditions. We're recommending it to amend, uh, to correct oversights, redundancies and errors. Um, and six, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Overall, there's very little that has changed from the original adoption. So it's still consistent overall. Um, knowing that we were gonna be looking at some of the floodplain regulations and that would be a topic of discussion, um, I just wanna point out a few things about, um, these. When you're looking diagrammatically at a manufactured home, the home itself is mounted onto a chassis, which is basically some I-beams. Um, when they are placed in place, they're put on piers. They also have tie-downs to keep them from being blown over off of those piers or in flood situations from being swept away. Um, the restored standards, um, and this is an illustration that was provided to me by the current floodplain manager to illustrate the difference between the old regulations and the current regulations, um, using an example lot in Red Bud, Red Bud Estates. Under the twenty fifteen regulations, this manufactured home, uh, would have its lowest floor, um, at about four point three feet above ground level in order to be one foot above the base flood elevation. When the MDC was adopted, there was a change to the regulations that changed the measurement from the, to the, to the bottom of the chassis. Um, that would put the bottom of the manufactured home at six point six feet. That's, that's excessive. That's not necessary to do this. So we'd like to go back to the twenty fifteen regulations. Uh, we really would like to get this fixed. We became aware of it as I was working on finishing up the MDC regulations. Um, and so if we roll it back to just the twenty fifteen, um, I think we're gonna be giving some relief to Red Bud that they were not expecting, um, or they were not expecting the regulations that we have in place now. Um, and we're going back to something that the city commission or a previous one had already adopted in order to provide protection to Red Bud Estates and anything else in the future conditions flood area. So with that, the planning board recommended approval, uh, six zero, uh, of the code amendment to the planning, or the city commission based on substantial compliance with the MDC. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
So the planning board already took a look at it. They were good with everything.
Yes.
Was, was there much public comment at that night at that thing?
Um, at that night, yes. We had some commentary on the, the floodplain regulation change. Um, we had a study session with the planning board in December, I think the twentieth. I can't remember the date exactly. When we ran through all of the regulatory changes, at that time, the flood regulations were not completed. They were still being assessed by the, um, state engineer who has to stamp them in order for them to be valid.
Okay. Any questions for John on his presentation?
So the explanation is that we overcompensated in the regula- in, in these regulations when we adopted it the first time? Miscalculated, overcomp- what did we do?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I wish I could say for certain. The floodplain regulations is one aspect of the MDC that I actually had no involvement in. Um, there is a regulatory best practice, um, if I understand correctly, and, and floodplain manager can correct me, that, um, in FEMA floodplain, their recommended best pack, practice is to measure to the bottom of the chassis. But it's not, it's not a regulatory requirement. They're just saying, you might wanna consider doing that. Um, so I'm guessing that whoever was working on this section thought, oh, I'm gonna incorporate that. Um, but, you know, elevating a manufactured home so that the bottom floor or the bottom is s- over six and a half feet above the ground really presents a lot of problems, uh, for building, uh, stair structures or ramp structures up to that manufactured home. You're elevated really, really high. And a- again, this is our, this is a floodplain, future conditions floodplain that we adopted. Uh, we did the analysis and we said, we wanna protect these people into the future, assuming that future conditions are going to cause greater or higher flooding. Um, so it, it strikes staff as being excessive that, that had gone through. I probably overexplained that.
No, I'm just, um, I want to be an advocate because this community has so many rivers, so many low places, and we have mobile home courts in those low lying areas. And what applies on one side of town also applies on the other side. And the countryside mobile home courts are where I live in that area. And there's water all the time there. Every time it rains an inch, there's water over the road or, and in the ditches because the owner doesn't clean them out. I mean, I just know that it's an inconvenience for the residents. It's muddy and sloppy and they're in the city limits and they're entitled to a certain standard. And that's the standard I want for them, uh, when I vote. And, uh, so I agree with you that six foot is pretty high to get up to the door of a, a mobile home. On the other hand, I, uh, you know, I think I have, uh, committed myself to never supporting a reduction in the flood standards for our citizens. And that is, that makes it a conflict for me. Uh, um, I don't know how else to, uh, because, uh, Re- Red Bud flooded and in twenty eighteen when I was mayor. I mean, I remember the Wildcat Creek and all of the, uh, flooding that took place out there. I live in, on the Blue River, edge of the Blue River, and I see the flooding there. This community is vulnerable and we have to, um, be vigilant that we don't allow, uh, happenstance. So I'm just, uh, just really, uh, looking at this hard to try to make sure that we aren't making a mistake. When we adopted the floodplain back when, I thought we were two foot above the floodplain. And I understand that we're only one foot, right?
The two feet is above the FEMA one hundred year floodplain.
Okay.
The point one percent chance. For our future conditions one, we said one foot because it was a, it was an estimate based on an analysis. And so we didn't wanna go excessively-
So it's still two feet above the FEMA floodplain?
It is, it is, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Sure.
So, um, to clarify, um, going back to the four point three is what's in place today? No, it's not. It's, it's currently six six. Going back would be to two years ago, before we updated the MDC, it was four feet three. So we're not lowering the original standards. We're lowering the excessively high ones back to where they were before.
I would agree with that.
If the, if we revert to the four point three, which was in effect before, that would've been in effect in twenty eighteen.
Yes.
So is any of the property, are any of the properties, uh, that will be affected by this change where they flooded in twenty eighteen?
Not that I'm aware of. And, and I just wanna clarify, four point three was just that one example lot. It, that's not the standard. It, it was just that one. It was four point three under the old standards with, was how much you had to elevate it and six-
On that one lot.
On just that one particular one.
It may be one foot on a different lot, higher.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
I just wanna be assured that by our agreeing to lower the standard, that we're not putting any residents in harm's way, any mobile homes in harms way. Uh, that's what I wanna hear.
Couple, couple comments to that, Commissioner-
He's talking, okay.
Jason. Um, one, when you say flooded, I assume you mean water in their home. Because there are plenty of pictures and evidence of water all throughout that park at varying levels of depth. So when we say flooded, I, I assume you're meaning water inside the actual structure.
I know that that's the FEMA, uh, flood insurance, uh, standard. You have to have, have floodwater on the first floor-
Yep.
-in order to get paid for flood insurance.
Sure, sure.
On the other hand, there are all kinds of other disadvantages that we are sub- can subject residents to. In Garden Way, it was water up above their cars and in fir- the first floor of those apartments for months, uh, before the people were able to resume a normal life. And, uh, I just wanna take this responsibility we have seriously, um, and make sure that there's the next five, ten inch thing, uh, event, that we aren't gonna flood these very, these very people.
And I think that the next comment I just wanna make, which I've heard in this room many times by staff and commissioners, that obviously there's no way for us to guarantee anything. There's no way for us to say, we're gonna prevent this from happening unless we just remove property and continue to remove property in harms way of that river. And we've seen it come out of its bank. We've seen it impact property and it'll, it'll continue to do so. I think some of the comments made by our prior administrator and, and Bill, I'm sure could chime in here too, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And that's why all those regs go into place and we try to put as many precautionary regulations that we can in, in order to attempt to avoid it. Rob's raising, raising the levy anywhere from eighteen inches to three feet.
I know.
And that's no guarantee-
I see it every day.
-that we won't have water in our downtown. And he has said that many times. But the regs are there to attempt on certain circumstances to keep people from being flooded. But there's no guarantee and there's no way we can ever say never in this room about anything associated with a flood. And I would just reiterate that. Rob said it many a times. Our prior flood administrator has said it. I'm sure Bill would say it. It is just a very difficult thing to predict and be absolute about.
I just expect us to do our best for our residents.
I agree.
Commissioner, I would, I would just add that in, in John or Rob or others that were involved in the MDC conversion, uh, I don't recall any staff meetings where we had this conversation of significantly, purposefully adjusting an elevation. I think what we had happened was there was some language adopted from FEMA that made the calculation change without really us understanding that. And so I think what we're trying to do is go back to what we all thought it was, uh, originally. Cause we certainly didn't highlight to this commission when we passed the MDC that we were raising that bar even further than the community level.
I agree.
I'm not sure just because a new owner comes to town that we have to agree to change our standard.
So that wasn't the purpose, the-
I know.
The new owner inquiring about this caused us to discover the, the fault.
Yes.
And my understanding on that, I mean, the, the standard here was to keep floodwater out of the first floor living, you know, of any building. And, you know, the one foot does that. I mean, that was the intent. And, I mean, you, you could make it eight feet, ten feet, but that's sort of ridiculous because you got tie-downs on these manufactured homes. And the higher you raise them up, the more wind that go- I, I see that as a bigger hazard, the, the thing being up on a, on a taller pier. And I think this, this does the intent of it. And, and it's also, you know, that's in that future area, as you said.
Yes.
It's a little bit different. We, we did, uh, as Commissioner Morse and I supported that, we expanded, you know, the, the whole idea of what we were gonna try to protect where in, in the past, nobody worried much about that future area. It was just the FEMA area.
Right.
So I, I, I don't see a problem with it. It does look to me like just a little technical thing on, you know, where do you measure it from? But, but the intent always was to keep the water out of that living area. And this does that. So I don't think any standard's been changed because the real standard was keep the water out of the living area.
And there have been no mobile homes, no mobile home courts approved or mobile homes cited since we adopted the MDC.
No.
So by reverting back, we are-
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
It's like nothing happened in the, in the interim.
Right.
Yes. So are you, Mayor Morse, are you, Commissioner Morse, are you saying there weren't any new ones because of the MDC?
No, because the city hasn't approved any new mobile home courts. And they probably won't, new ones in the city limits. All we, the only way we get them is by annexing them typically because they're always at the edge of town and they're always close to the river and-
Thank you. So I was wondering, the, the original reason Commissioner Morse wanted to table it is because there wasn't enough community input. So I don't know how many people were aware of the meeting that was happening at the planning board and what kind of other input did you get other than from the people that are present in that area regarding the, um, change in the leverage?
Well, there are a lot of issues, a lot of changes in this document. The flood, um, um, oh, changing the flood, uh, measurement is just one little piece of it.
They're all highlighted in this.
But when you look at all the highlights that are taking place and whether you understand them or you've had an explanation about what they mean, they're just, uh, technical talk that John talks.
So how much input did you have then? Uh, did you, some of it's because somebody pointed it out to you. And some of it is because, you know, maybe within that year you found out, hey, this works or this doesn't work, or I understand the confusion. Was there also feedback along the way from other entities? Uh, and as you were getting ready to present to us in front of us, did you have others take a look at this that were either owners, consumers, or out, out in the public for, for their feedback once again?
Um, this developed over time because, um, staff from our department and other departments, risk reduction, for example, Public Works, would try and administer these regulations and say, wait a minute, something's not right here. Risk reduction would say, we used to have this provision where you could have these encroachments into front yards, side yards, just to choose one example. That didn't make it into the new one. Is that intentional? Oh, no. It was not intentional. Um, we would be working with people trying to develop or build a house and they'd say, you have conflicting regulations here. Why is that? And so as they were flagging it, we started compiling a list, um, of those. And we were getting feedback. These are people that are both developers and people that are individual property owners. Um, we saw this as a technical fix that did not really reach the, a broad scope of, we need to have open houses or anything like that. I, I seriously believe, I mean, honestly believe that, that this is a technical matter more than anything else. There's not really any policy changes, except maybe switching conditional uses from BZA over to planning board. And again, it's because BZA's charge is relief from the regulations. A conditional use permit is site development plan review. Um, that's what we had.
All right.
And so, uh, again, yes, we had the, the, um, work session with the planning board. We brought it back a couple of weeks later for their recommendation to you. So those were the public input, um, opportunities that we had.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think we'll throw it open for a public comment. If anybody wants to comment on these potential changes to the MDC, please, uh, sign your name at the podium there and tell us your name and where you live or why you're here.
Uh, I will sign in and thank you very much. My name is Paul Uber. Some of you are familiar with the letter that I sent last Friday on this issue that we've been discussing that John has been, uh, giving you the background on. Um, I'm part of the ownership group of Red Bud Estates. Uh, I'm here from Denver because we do have a high level of concern with some of the aspects of the MDC amendments. But I'm happy to report to you that I had meetings today with several staff members. And as a result of it, I was going to come and propose a three-part motion along the lines of what I described in my letter. Based on the discussions that I've been having with staff, I think we can eliminate really, quite frankly, all three of those. However, I do have concerns about reserving rights with respect to the grandfathering of the existing homes. The types of regulations that we've been speaking about and John has been explaining are, in our opinion, should be prospective, not retrospective. And there's been some homes there where there's a question of having to potentially raise them. Well, many of those homes are owned by residents. We don't own the homes in the park in general. We own some, but not all. The majority of them are owned by residents. And so to go back and look to raise or change the set of a home that's now set three feet above grade is, it's pretty problematic. You know, it's a big financial burden to those homeowners and we want to avoid that. And, you know, to your point, Commissioner Morse, um, Ian Riki of Schwab Eaton is gonna speak after me. And he's gonna explain a little bit about what I would describe as shallow flooding, flooding in the streets, up onto the lawns, but not even up to the bottom of the homes. That's what occurred in ten, eleven and eighteen. But he's gonna detail that for you and we have some pictures. They're actually the pictures that were on the, the back of my letter. Um, so in any event- So, in any event, what we're asking of the commission this evening is simply to ask staff to endeavor to take a good look at this grandfathering issue, and to give us some feedback on that. We're not asking for any types of motions to amend the MDC, and quite frankly, we would appreciate, as the owners of Red Bud, if you would pass that, because what has happened is, because of this revelation with respect to, you know, what's the proper way to set these homes, we have nine homes out there that we want to set, and we got stop workers on those on my birthday, December 1st. Needless to say, it wasn't the best birthday present, but we understand the concerns of the city, and we want to work and cooperate with the city. And so, if you are able to see your way clear to pass this this evening, and have a second reading in two weeks, that will open the door for us to recommence the provision of affordable housing for the workforce of Manhattan, Kansas. So, in any event, I have kind of digressed from a lot of the remarks that I wanted to make, but I think you have a sense of where we're coming from. What we're trying to provide at Red Bud Estates is clean, safe, attractive, affordable, unsubsidized workforce housing. It's an acute need that was articulated in your housing analysis, and, you know, that's what we want to do, we want to bring 70 more homes in. So, you know, round numbers, if three people per household, that's another 200 residents that will have affordable workforce housing. So, I think that is most of what I intended to say when I came up, and if I could turn it over to Ian Rieke of Schwab Eaton, our civil engineers, he'll explain a little more about the flooding in the '10, '11, and '18 storm, and how we had shallow flooding in the streets, but it was not flooding the homes.
Hold that up for a second.
Sure.
So, when you said you're going to try to place 70 houses, have you got 70 more lots, or are you just infilling into empty lots, replacing crappy old houses? What's, how do those 70 come into play?
I would say the majority of them would be going on vacant lots, although there are some homes in there that are older, and we want to renew the housing stock and put in relatively, they may not be brand-new homes, but they'll be much newer than the ones that we'd be taking out.
And you still are going to abandon that one cul-de-sac that flooded before?
Oh, that's not even on the table.
Right.
That's not even on the table. I mean, that is, we've seen the photos from '10 and '11 on that. That is, to your point, that ain't happening under our watch, period. That is not happening. And, you know, it wouldn't happen under the city's watch, it's sort of redundant for me to say that, but nevertheless, I want you to know I feel very strongly about that. I saw those photos, I was shocked. And, you know, that's not what we're about. We don't, we want to do the right thing. As far as this floodplain situation goes, we don't want to endanger the... Oh, am I out of time?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's why I asked a question, sorry about that.
That's pretty tight, little beaver.
You acted like you were almost done earlier, so, okay. So, we'll ask you some more questions later, if we have some.
Sure. Okay.
Actually, Mayor, I did have one question.
Okay, one more.
When you were kind of explaining about the existing homes there, the way that you explained it, I would take from that then, when, because the resident buys the home and you lease them the land...
Yes.
That the foundation, what I call the foundation, the peers and all that, is part of the home?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, if it's not grandfathered, that financial burden would fall onto the homeowner...
Correct.
...to build that up?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions before I leave the podium? All right, thank you very much.
Ian Rieke, representing Schwab Eaton, of 5410 Ledstone Drive. The presentation that the developer had prepared today has changed significantly, but he did want me to address why we believe grandfathering the existing homes is still a safe option, other than the reasons that he gave for the economic hardship on the current owners. First, we recognize that it's not safe to place homes in the cul-de-sac in the northeast corner of the community. I don't know if you have the pictures that you can bring up of the flooding in that area, but several homes were inundated above the finished floor elevation, and portions of that cul-de-sac were in the floodway, the actual FEMA-defined floodway of the creek. So, there is no intent to place any homes in that cul-de-sac. Second, the three big floods that the city experienced in 2010, 2011, and 2018, while they inundated the roadway system in that park, except for the cul-de-sac, no manufactured homes had any damage to their finished floor, or even the substructure, as far as we're aware. The water got into the various roadways, in some cases, it reached the skirting of the homes, but it did not get up into the substructure of the homes. And the 2010, 2011 storms were, I believe, categorized as 200 and 250-year storms. The 2018 was categorized as in excess of a thousand-year storm. There's not much that FEMA would expect anyone to do in relation to storms of that size. There you go, the shallow flooding can be seen throughout the park. And again, most of those homes, with the exception of the cul-de-sac, at most, the water touched the skirting. I guess the final point would be that the future conditions flood elevation with which the city used to determine their community floodplain elevations, when AMAC did that study, they were directed to assume all development in the drainage basin that could occur did occur, and that was a pretty broad strokes assumption. They were also directed to assume that no additional detention ponds or retention basins would be constructed, even though those are current requirements of the city and always have been. So, the actual flood elevations that they're looking at for the future conditions areas are, in our opinion, excessive, and those flood elevations would not be reached, even theoretically based on the studies, until all development did occur, which could be decades from now, probably in excess of the lives of the existing homes that are out there. All of which, in conclusion, is why we believe that grandfathering is appropriate for the existing homes that are set out there under those circumstances. We're asking that the commission direct city staff to promptly review the grandfathering issue and make a recommendation, but the other three items that were in the original packet that were supplied, we're withdrawing those requests. Any questions?
Jared, could you put what's on the screen on our monitors? And this is the what flood?
I don't, which one is this? Do you remember which flood this was? Was this the '18?
This particular one is the '18 flood. The big one. Most of the photographs, if you, I don't know if we can scroll, do you, can we use that mouse to scroll?
The far-left edge of this picture is the cul-de-sac.
Right.
And where will the new lots be?
Well, the new lots are scattered throughout the development.
They're just empty lots, right?
They're empty lots there now, yes, that's correct. This is, and I'm just going to scroll through these just to give you some idea, I have them labeled, that's the '18 flood, that's down kind of midway in the park, north to south. This is on the upper northwest side, and, you know, plenty of lawns showing, not reaching the homes.
And a point I would make, Commissioner Morris, is that the amendments to the MDC that are up for discussion right now would only affect the finished floor elevation of the homes themselves. There's nothing in the floodplain regulations that would in any way affect the water that's in the streets. There's no way to do that without filling the entire site and rebuilding the entire site. And even that would be a mistake, because it would cause higher flooding upstream to existing structures upstream, because there would be no relief area like Red Bud for the waters to flow into. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Let you guys have a seat again. Anybody else want to comment on this MDC changes?
Ian Rieke, I find myself in the strange position of representing two different entities today. I also represent the developers at Northwing, and I wanted to make a comment not to do with any of the flooding issues, but to do with the rezoning changes that were part of the MDC amendment as well. The Northwing property owners, the Anders Brothers, would request humbly that the commission go ahead and approve the MDC changes, as they're stated, as they are seeking relief for the change of RL to the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size, which affected their preliminary plats, and if they want to proceed with their next unit of development, they would need that change in order to do it. We currently have a rezoning application in process. It was going somewhat in a concurrent timeframe with the MDC amendment, and if the MDC is passed, we will withdraw that rezoning request. If it's not, if the MDC amendment is tabled, or suspended, or rejected, we'll have to rezone and proceed with our next phase of development, but they would prefer not to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I will close the public comment. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yes, on the grandfather issue, would just like to get some staff comment on that. I mean, when I read some of this, like this one that says, "The following provisions are required for all manufactured homes or warm mobile homes that are placed or substantially improved," blah, blah, blah. When I read that, I'm thinking there is a grandfather, because you mentioned the substantially improved, which implies that something was already there. And I think the concern is that it might be a little vague, and can we make some stronger language about it being grandfathered? So, again, I'd just like to get the staff response to the grandfather issue.
I can respond to just that part of the question. So, grandfathering typically means that you, that the prior version of the zoning regulations continues to apply to your property even though they're changed. That's not what they're actually asking for. They don't want the prior version of the MDC with the six-foot to apply to them, they want something different than that. And you're correct, Commissioner, that the way the MDC works is that the regulations that are in place at the time that it's set or substantially improved, which is defined under the MDC, are the regulations that apply. So, the ones that are there, they are complying with whatever was in effect at the time they were set. So, I think that's what the point you made, Commissioner, is that we're not changing the ones that already are set or have been set substantially improved. But grandfathering, that's not what we're, that is not the term that we would use for what they're asking for, because if you're to grandfather, the more restrictive provision would continue to apply to those properties.
Okay. You guys are okay with what was in place two years ago? Mostly.
To be clear...
Come on up here, it's, we're in the significant discussion here.
To be clear, what we're looking to happen is, regardless of what code under which the prior homes, the existing homes were set, we do not want to have this or any other more stringent provisions of either past or present codes applied retroactively to these homes. We would like the 260-plus-or-minus homes that are there that are set three-foot above grade to remain as they're set, and not have to comply again with any past regulations that may not have been enforced, or the go-forward regulations. And a really important footnote, just to underscore it again, relative to what Ian was saying, is what we experienced in those three different significant flood events was shallow flooding in the streets, coming up to the bottoms of the houses, and in some instances, going up a little bit, but never inundating those houses. That did not happen. And so, we feel comfortable that that three-foot is adequate protection for the property and welfare of those residents that have existing homes there.
Take what we have now, Chris.
Yeah.
And if I can make sure that we understand this, and Bill can, from floodplain perspective, can override this, but we're not affirmatively making them make a change to those set properties now. The what, what they're asking for is that if they're set or substantially reset or substantially improved in the future, they'll be stuck in time in terms of the regulations that will apply. So, I just want to be sure the commission understands, we're talking about a future change to those existing properties at that time. It is set property, I should say. It has to be set or substantially improved.
I haven't had the opportunity to confer on, sort of, I'll just talk in a common-sense way.
I think I might be able to clarify kind of what Paul's getting at here, too. We have a group of homes that were permitted since 2016 that did not follow those regulations. We adopted regulation and didn't amend our process as a, for the enforcement and the things to make sure they were followed. We're not talking about grandfathering 300 homes. I think what Paul's alluding to is what we're going to do with those 40. And I think until we know exactly what that, the degree of non-compliance is, it's tough to make that decision on what we're going to do with those. On top of that, what we do with those, I believe will have an impact on our local rating for flood insurance, and I think that's, Bill is already, we've been in contact with the state to figure out what that means, but we don't have that figured out yet. So, Paul, am I correct on, that's the group of homes that you're really talking about the grandfathering with?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a fair, that's a fair statement, Ryan. You know, and I, like, you know, if you take roughly 40 off of 360, there's 320 other homes that were there before 2015. I mean, as you would expect, I would not want to have to go to my residents and go, oh, by the way, the city has a new ordinance that's going to affect you, even though you have a home from, that's been set. I mean, those homes, some of those homes have been in that park for 40 years. The one thing that's constant is this three-foot elevation, generally, which we found to provide, at least for these three major storms, adequate flood protection.
Those 40 units, Ryan, we've talked about this, those are not a grandfathering zoning issue, they're an enforcement issue.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so, my question is, how did those 40 get placed? Did we not enforce the things at the time? Did they fudge their paperwork? What, how did that happen? And if it's our fault, and we can't hardly crack the whip on somebody else for a screw-up that happened on our watch, that way?
Yeah, it's solely, it's our responsibility, it was a lack of follow-up to make sure that we amended a process to ensure that the enforcement was...
So, is it a six-inch thing we're off, or is it two feet, or they, who knows?
Yeah, that's the question, that I think that's a starting point. We've got to figure out what is the impact, what are the implications? Because I think there's varying degrees of non-conformity there. I think if we're talking about raising homes, that's a lot different than adjusting how they're actually anchored to the ground. Those are two very different things to address. If it's a matter of strict compliance versus some level of safety we can get to that we're comfortable with, certainly, I think we're open to options, but we need to really define what the problem is, understand what the implications are with our rating. Although they're regulations we adopted above and beyond FEMA, not following them can still affect our rating, is my understanding. So, it's not anything that the park did, I think it's just a matter of we didn't have the process and the catches in place that needed to be there.
Yeah, my thought is, you know, this particular issue needs to be addressed another time, it's not part of what we're focused on tonight, which is the change of this, you know, developmental code.
You're right.
So, I would like to just say, fine, risk assessment, you know, do your data collection.
And I think actually, these amendments to the MDC really have to happen in order for us to really move forward, so.
Well, there you go, now you get to move forward, maybe.
Thank you.
All right, we've already closed public comment, any other questions? Anybody got a motion down there?
I'll make the motion that we approve first reading of an ordinance amending the Manhattan Developmental Code as presented in the staff report and recommended by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Butler made, and Commissioner Mata seconded the motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
No.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Bishop Ready?
Yes.
Bishop Butler?
Yes.
Bishop Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
I would just say, as an explanation...
I would just say, as an explanation, that it does bother me when we, from a bird's eye view, or an ownership, or a city position, say, "Oh, that's just water up to the curb," or "up on their grass," or "up on their car." These people are entitled to a good quality of life, too. And these, we have to think about their well-being, and their cars being flooded, and other negative impacts. So we have, when we create an area, that's the time to make the difference. And I understand about grandfathering and, but change is hard. And I just don't like saying, "Oh, you'll just have to put up with that." Because that isn't what is, it's not a good idea. It's not good policy, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
All right, very good. We'll move on to item C, our last agenda item, which is consider an ordinance prohibiting a city commissioner from holding a dual office. Who is the presenter? Katie?
Commissioners, I just have a few comments about the ordinance from here. Just to remind, just as background, at the briefing session on January 10th, the commission asked for first reading of an ordinance on tonight's meeting. And the ordinance was to prohibit a city commissioner from holding any other elected federal, state, or local office. And a majority at that time said that it would include a grandfather clause, so it didn't apply to any seated city commissioners. So tonight, that's what you have before you. It amends, we currently have an ordinance that states the eligibility requirements to be a city commissioner. Those requirements are US citizenship, 18 years of age, qualified elector of the city, and then residency in the city limits has to be maintained from filing through end of term. So this change says that there's no dual office holding. After the term has been assumed, a newly-elected city commissioner who holds another office before, has to resign that other office before they take the city's oath. The current version of the ordinance says that an incumbent commissioner who takes a second oath of office is presumed to have vacated the seat as of the date of that oath. Setting that aside for a second, there's another part of it that that, those are related. One thing we talked about on the briefing session was that this is an exercise of home rule authority, but there's really no case law about whether or not, about these kinds of ordinances, because as far as we know, Manhattan is unique in this ordinance. We also know that there are state and federal laws and constitutional provisions that regulate dual office holding. So it's not exceptional in that way. And that the common law concept of incompatibility applies to every dual office holder. And that's an analysis of whether any appointed, elected, or employment in public office conflicts with another office in terms of interference of the duties and responsibilities. So about the grandfather clause, that typically when new eligibility requirements are imposed on an elected office, they, the incumbents are grandfathered, as long as they were eligible at the time of the election. I bring that up and the other thing, because the two provisions go together. If we meet, we leave the provision in there that says, on oath, taking a second oath, you're presumed to have vacated your commission office, and we don't have a grandfather clause, we have, I think, two commissioners who are serving in some kind of elected position that we would need to talk about. Because presumably, what's that, what that's saying is that you somehow unwittingly vacated the commission position unknowingly prior to the adoption of this ordinance. And that's not an outcome that's appropriate for the ordinance. So I know there's been some conversation. I don't know where the commission's at in terms of grandfathering, but we would need to make some other changes to the text of the ordinance before second reading, if the commission adopts it on first reading, to address the factual scenarios before the commission.
Okay, so what you're, just going to repeat it to see if I got something right. So that, we know this one because it's a state senator position. We feel the conflict's pretty big, and we don't want that to be there. But, for example, I'm a precinct committee man, and I was elected. That's an elected position. So in essence, you'd be grandfathering me and two as part of, part of that.
The direction of the commission on January 10th was every state or federal, local, elected office.
No, you did it. That's right, no, that was, yeah, good, good thing to bring up.
And I don't know when you assume that position, so I don't know how, again, this whole not, if you weren't grandfathered, you would have, I don't know, when you took the oath for that versus your city commissioner.
They just send you a certificate.
Okay, okay. So maybe that doesn't apply to that, but, but you're correct.
I mean, it is a party position versus a, again, I don't know, but the.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we could talk about and clarify in the ordinance, because the ordinance is really broad in how it's written. Because those positions are statutory, and they are, and they're, you have to file, and they're elected on the ballot, then it probably would fall under that. But we could clarify that in the ordinance on second reading, if there was, you wanted to make that clear, that it includes those types of positions or something else. So that would be something worth discussing if.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to just do it the way it is and, you know, say, "I can't run again for that." If I'm running for the commissioner, I'd be off. Because that grandfather just shouldn't keep going, is, you know.
That's a good point, Commissioner. The grandfathering only applies to incumbent in their current term. It doesn't, if they, if you were to file to be elected again, then you'd have to be eligible at that time. That's correct.
Yeah. Again, I'm just saying, I wouldn't be opposed to say, "Don't do anything else if you're going to do it."
Precinct committee man is pretty much like not doing anything.
I know, but it's the appearance.
Oh, Katie, I have a question. So you're saying this was always in there, as far as taking the oath and all of that?
This is the first draft of the ordinance, Commissioner?
Well, you referenced, in the old thing, there was something.
You said that's always been there. Like, what has always been there? The second elected, as far as taking the oath? Sir?
The current rule is what?
For eligibility for the commission?
Yeah, because, well, not what's eligible. There was something in there, I heard it, too.
Yeah.
Start over with your presentation when you said, "This is the deal, this is what I propose currently, though, what?"
Goodness. Let me see what I would have said that about.
Jason, did you hear it?
I think you used the word "current" for the proposed ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
I think you used the word "current" instead of "proposed."
I'm sorry, I'm referring to the version in front of you tonight, in terms of the change. Thank you.
Because then I would have been out of compliance, because I didn't know when I asked.
The current requirements are just US citizenship, 18 years of age, qualified elector, and then the residency from filing to end of term. Those are the current requirements, sorry for that.
So there is no other current thing that addresses our situation?
No, we have no other restriction regarding eligibility. There are statutes and federal laws in other areas, but we do not have those applied to our offices.
There is a statute about county commissioners, but it is more of a constitutional office than city commissioner is. I don't, I mean, I think it's really difficult to find a conflict of interest between being a city commissioner and a state legislator. You're one of five here, you're one of, I don't know, 100 and some. In, one of 40 in the Senate, 125 in the House. Jeff Underhill, the city commissioner and former mayor of Junction City, was just elected state representative in November. And he has stated publicly that he intends to keep both positions. There are other examples around the state of dual office holders also. It's not rocket science. It's, it happens. I would say it would. I would say it would happen more, it would happen more in the Republican Party, because the majority of Kansas is Republican, than it would among Democrats. It just happens to happen this time with regard to a Democrat.
I know, Junction City is a first-class kind of place. Love it, love it, love it, love it, over there, so. All right, what other questions you have for Katie? Anybody? If not, we'll take a little public comment, and we can chat some more.
Yeah, once we take some public.
If anybody here in the public would like to comment on this agenda item, please come up, sign your name, state your name, state your address, and then you can have five minutes.
So we're considering the draft, or this ordinance, first reading?
Right.
As it's written? Okay.
Okay, I guess there's no public comment. Is there a motion or any other discussion, Commissioners?
Well, I'll just make the comment that, I know we already talked about it, and that's why we put it on here to vote on, that, at least to get it on here, a majority of us didn't want to have someone serve both, because of the conflict of interests and being able to really devote the time and do both jobs well. I'm, you know, fine with the grandfather, I'm fine without a grandfather to put it, put it in. And again, it's really our process. We can change it, change it again, we can do what we want with it. But the response I've got from a lot of people in the community, whether it's grandfathered or not, is that they really want us to not have people and serve in both positions.
Well, and it's one of those things where, well, the voters are electeder to the commission. And so I think we need to grandfather, simply because I don't want to overrule the voters' selection on this. Now, you'll have to take it up with the voters if you stay around all year and then give it up in time for the fall election, or however. I don't know if you know how that would work. But, but, yeah, you'll have to answer to your voters at some point, our voters, the voters, and we'll let them figure out whether it was a good idea for you to stay around or not. And so that's your call, and that's where a lot of the discussion about the replacement thing is all going to be based on the fact if there actually is an empty seat, we have to worry about filling at some point. But, yeah, as long as there's a grandfather thing in there, because I don't think we ought to override what the voters did. I don't want to take that power away from them. So I'll support it as it is, and then we can tweak the thing. And I would, I would be okay with throwing in language that you could be a precinct committee man or woman, simply because it ain't that big a deal until you do get a vote to replace.
Until you vote to replace.
And I would like to have that opportunity, if I ever, if you ever give up the precinct thing for our neighborhood and such, so, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I know you've heard saying, you know, you don't want people saying, supporting your perspective on this. And I've heard people supporting my perspective on this, which has been to continue this role till we have a process in place to replace me. My intent is not to stay here for three years. That's my term. That's not my intent. My intent is to do my due diligence and my responsibility to make sure we have a process in place to select the next city commissioner that's going to take this seat, mainly because I believe the community elected a balanced body, whatever that might look like. They elected the three of us during that election. So it wasn't just tilted one way or tilted the other way. So I, and that's what I'm going after. It's not here to say, "Yes, I can do everything under the sun, and I'm proud of that." But at the same time, most of us have, several of us had full-time jobs as city commissioners. I was a full-time teacher, and I was on the city commission. And I know Jared McKee, and several people had full-time jobs as well as being on the city commission. So going to Topeka, coming back and serving on one individual that's doing that, but there's plenty of individuals that are doing a similar position, such as Jeff Underhill. And he's my colleague now at the state. So we tend to share a few common aspects in this role. But that's, that's my goal, is to roll off of the city commission. And I've had support in that decision process, just like you've had support in the decision you're making tonight. So I don't think, I don't think it's to say the entire community speaks the same way on this issue, but that's what's good about our community. They have a lot of opinions, and I have, I feel I'm doing, fulfilling my responsibility.
I'd just say that I do agree with Mark. I'm willing to vote for this, to do the grandfather. But I also agree that, you know, this, to me, this is all we need to do. We don't need to work on a process until we have a resignation. And, you know, I think once we do this, we just keep going on as normal. If we get a resignation, then we'll address that at the time.
I have, I have confidence that if anyone in this community can do both of these, fulfill the roles of both of these jobs, it is Yusha. I have seen her raise three kids and teach full-time and get two master's degrees, and she has worked hard. She's worked with multiple organizations in the community, chaired them. She is very capable. And I just think that is, that it's possible for her to do that. I, grandfathering, I, I think it's unfortunate that Manhattan does not have a succession process, that it's gone until we are in the year 2023, and we have never adopted one. We have plugged holes in the past. In the past, when there's a vacancy, we have typically called upon former city commissioners, former mayors, to step in for a part of a year until the next election. This could go on for three years. And I, it's unfortunate that we have to have this division over this issue. And if we had a process, that would be ideal, I suppose. Well, I guess the majority could still wipe out the process, and then we'd be back to nothing again, like has happened already in several cases. So, you know, it would be, order and stability in the community is what's important, not disruption and not upheaval, so, over some of these situations. So, okay, you were going to say something?
Yeah, you know, Mayor Hattasol did make a proposal at our last work session, and I think there was a majority agreeable to it, to have, keep it vacant and have the community select the fourth commissioner to take the seat and continue the two years from the term. And, and there was a majority with that. So unless we've dropped that, that's something I think that we should try to pursue. I think that was very equitable, and it gives the, gives it back to the community, where it should be, for the voters to pick the next person. That's why we even discussed having a special election, and how costly that would be, and not to do that. So we did have this discussion already about 10 days ago.
Yeah, but that was up to, we were still waiting to see if Katie could figure out if that was legal. I don't know if it is or not to have four commissioners on the ballot in November.
Well, we haven't explored that. I guess, let me back up. We do have a process in place, and an ordinance adopted to replace a commissioner. It's Section 2-16 of the city code. And it states that if there's a vacancy prior to end of term, a majority appoints that individual, and that the majority at the time determines the selection process for that new commissioner. It also says that if the vacancy has occurred after the filing deadline for that particular position, has occurred after the filing deadline for that year, that that will just go ahead and remain vacant until the actual election, which would be a few months later, as long as that position's not needed for a quorum. So we have a process. And in fact, our ordinance is more like more other cities in that there's that ability at the time to determine the process for appointing the person, whether it's an application process or it's relying on someone who's served before. So what we're talking about in an ordinance in the future is not something specific to any current vacancy. It would be an amendment to Section 2-16 that gives the commission an alternative to appointment, which is putting it on the ballot. It's not going to mandate that either. The option will be there to do that. And then what you have to do is then you have to, if the commission at the time, if that, if we adopt that ordinance, it gives us the power to add it to the ballot, then we have to adopt a resolution to ask the county to put it on the ballot. So I've verified all of that with the county. The question has been, how's it going to be listed? And it's kind of hard for me to get their input on that until we have an ordinance, and I was going to send them a model resolution and see if I could answer that question for them, if the commission still wanted to have this option of sending this position, a position like this, to the election. So I have to give the county some kind of sample for them to respond to how we will be able to list it. I, I'm going to write it in the way that you want it to be written. I mean, that's how we're going to propose it for the ballot, but we'll have to get their feedback when they can actually see what our authority to, we don't have, we don't have the authority right now to do this, but we can give it to ourselves by ordinance, and then we have to adopt a resolution to mandate how we want the ballot to read.
I think we should pursue that. I mean, I think that was sort of what the consensus was, and, you know, we're good. And, you know, I understand, you know, Commissioner Morse's position. I was just surprised that anybody would take two offices. I didn't realize there were people in Topeka doing that, and that's why I want to see this ordinance changed, so that we don't have to deal with it ever again.
Yeah, I just throw out also that, I mean, I like the fact of the way that our. Yeah, I just throw out also that, I mean, I like the fact of the way that our ordinance is written now that says the commission is going to come up with the process when it happens. Because one of the things is, a new commission, even if we set that ordinance in place, can simply change it to suit them. So you could think it's going to go one way, then you can have the, say we go all the way through the election, you get a new city commission, they say, well, I don't like that, I want to appoint it to the rest of the term like you originally had it. Switch it right, right, right back and go that way. So that's why I'm not hung up a lot on let's come up with that process because, and rather just leave it to the commission at that time, because they can always change it and make it the process they want anyway.
You can change any ordinance, right?
Well, for an ordinary ordinance, that's much easier. There are a few cities that have put the process in the charter ordinance, which they can still change, but it's a longer process and it's subject to petition, so.
Either case, how about I just make the motion that we adopt first reading of an ordinance amending section 215 prohibiting dual office holding as a city commissioner while simultaneously serving in other local, state, or federal elected office.
Is there a second?
Oh, second with a comment that we will want to take a look at what Katie said about for like a second reading to see about those other positions. And yeah, I'd like to stay being a precinct committee person, it doesn't crush me if we take it, take it out either, though.
All right.
When would it be effective?
If, if we.
As written? As written? I mean, so it would be effective immediately?
No.
No.
Second reading.
Second reading would be February 7th and so about February 12th is when it will be published and effective in the city. But it wouldn't apply to any incumbents.
Okay.
It should be to the next.
It would be grandfathered.
And it'd be before the filing deadline for this year.
Okay. And how do we, is there, is it our intention to put the position on the ballot for the November election then?
Until there's a vacancy, we're not going anywhere.
So there's no guarantee for that? Okay.
We, we did ask her to look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's intent.
That's true. Okay.
Yusha's going to resign when there's an effort to do that, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Butler made a motion, Commissioner Motta seconded it. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Motta and Commissioner Ready made and seconded the motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Meeting's adjourned. Go Cats.